I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Directors, Study Session of Tacoma Public Schools on Thursday, February 17, 2022, to order. Let's all stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as the first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. So, welcome to the study session, everyone. Thanks for being here. This is pretty exciting. It's been a while since we've actually done a study session. And actually, we've asked our very own counsel, Renee Trubled, to start us off tonight with an explanation of the different types of board meetings that exist, when we use them, what they're for, so that might help folks understand why a study session versus a business meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to our general counsel, Trubled.
Thank you so much, President Bonbright. And I'm just going to roll back to the beginning here. Different types of board meetings. It has been a while since we've had a study session. So tonight is not an official board business meeting. But as a reminder, there won't be business conducted tonight because the board only works as a whole. An individual board member can't make a decision that would bind Tacoma Public Schools and the board. And this is all by state statute and also district policy. And we do defer to our board president as the spokesperson for the board, although we do like to rely on our public information office as much as possible as well to speak for the board. So the board also, in addition to working as a whole, has to work in public, which is difficult. I used to work in the private industry, and this was a big change for me, to understand that it's difficult. You all have to do business from the dais. And so a study session gives you an opportunity to be in a little more relaxed environment to dig in-depth into a topic. But when we have an official business meeting, it has to occur in public as well as any other times that we have a quorum of three board members or more. And we have to have a quorum to take action. We don't have to have a quorum for conversation. So let's say if unfortunately, we only had two board members here tonight, we could still proceed with the study session because we're having essentially a conversation and we're not taking any official business. One of the reasons behind the Open Public Meetings Act is transparency and that we want to be accountable to our public and our constituents. So again, the different types of board meetings. Next week, we'll be having an official business meeting again. We do allow public comment at our board meeting, but it's considered a meeting in the public, not with the public. There are other times that the board will actually engage with the public. Study session like tonight is where staff is giving a presentation to the board, and the board can ask questions in a more relaxed environment, and the topics are aligned with the board's strategic plan. A committee of the whole is something that we started a few years ago, and with COVID, we haven't done that in a while. But that is like a study session. Again, it's an open public meeting. It will be noticed. The public can attend and watch on televised, but the staff doesn't usually give a presentation. It's an opportunity for the board to have a more in-depth conversation on a topic. A retreat is when the board decides to meet for its own self-development, professional development, goal-setting. Again, it's an open public meeting that's available to the public, but it's primarily for the board's team-building and ability to reflect on where it's going. There are more types. President Bonbright and I were talking about how many different types there are. There's also a public hearing, and our chief financial officer, Rosalind Medina, has one of those at least once a year by statute. And we had one at our last board meeting. We have to have one when we sell a piece of property. So we will notice that and allow for public comment on those topics. A listening session. I think the last time the board had some of those was on the budget, where it's an opportunity to actually engage with the board in public, a more accessible way for the board to receive feedback from the public on a particular item. A special meeting is when we have an emergency situation. We have to give at least 24 hours' notice. It's noted, put on the agenda, and we do take action, but it's typically for an emergency item. And then there is executive sessions, you will see noted sometimes. Those are allowed only by statute. There's very specific topics that have to fit into a statute, primarily covered by attorney-client privilege, and the topic and the subject matter is confidential. So even though we notice that type of meeting, there is an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act where it is not held in the public, and the board members have to keep the subject confidential. There are two types of meetings that are not subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. There will be times that the board will meet in a closed session that will not be noticed. It's not open to the public, and that's for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining. And then there's also times when the board will meet as a quasi-judicial panel, for example, to hear the appeal of a personnel matter or to hear the appeal of a discrimination or harassment situation. Those are not open to the public, and that's also covered by statute. So that's a lot of different board meetings, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? We're clear on we're here tonight for the study session. So thank you so much for doing that, General Counsel Trubled. I think it does help for all of to remember what we're doing here tonight. It's a fact-finding opportunity. This is an exciting topic tonight around academic excellence and the CAP plans. And so we have an opportunity to ask questions and wonderings and knowing that eventually down the road, there will be some decisions that we'll make, but those will be made at a business meeting. So I want to thank in advance all the staff that have put a lot of energy into tonight's presentations because I know it's a lot of work to figure out how to concisely help inform this board so that we can make good decisions. So we appreciate all of you. So now I will turn it over. Unless there are any questions? Nope? Okay. We're going to turn it over to our superintendent, who will introduce the next item, which is the -- we're discussing two things tonight, the annual continuous achievement plans or the CAP plans and also a budget kickoff. So we've got those two pieces, and I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent, who's going to introduce the first group.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we get going into that, there was an announcement made today, and I thought I would just take a moment to maybe attempt to clarify what that announcement said. And so I know families are eagerly waiting, and I know staff are eagerly waiting. And what I'm here to say is more information will be coming forward. Staff will get a quick update tonight on what are some initial next steps, and then our families should be expecting some updates starting tomorrow. In short, there are a few things. The governor announced that the indoor mask requirements at the state level have been -- will be removed on March 21st. So that's indoor at the state level on March 21st. What now is going to happen is each local health authority will make determinations if they are going to have any additional requirements, knowing that the state mandate is being lifted. Additionally, there are some outdoor requirements that have changed, and some of those have already been in play. And so we'll be bringing our community an update of where we are with outdoor requirements in our communication starting tomorrow, and so families can see what that will look like. It may have been lost in the press conference, but it is our understanding that students, staff, still will have to wear masks on buses until further notice. And so I want to highlight that although people are in different places around masks, masks are not going to be 100% going away for all students and staff in every situation. And we will not be making those decisions. We will be following the health authority's requirements, and that health authority includes our Tacoma Pierce County Health Department as well as DOH. And so we will not be getting additional guidance from the state on what those requirements are. We're hearing up until like March 10th. So we're hearing that there is going to be some unknowns for a few weeks. And so in the meantime, unless otherwise noted and communicated, all staff and students and visitors will continue to be required to wear masks indoors until March 21st, and then we will be giving you further updates as we get those updates. Some folks may be saying to themselves, "Well, how do I raise my voice?" Well, that would be to the Department of Health and to the Pierce County Department of Health at this point. And so we'll make sure that folks understand that process as they move forward. I wish I had more clarity. I wish I had more information to give to folks. In the meantime, until further notice, all staff and students are always going to be welcome to wear masks, and we will continue to provide PPEs as we move forward. Okay? More information to come. There'll be some formal communications that are coming out tonight and tomorrow, and then over the weekend as well. I'll pause for questions.
I just was hoping around the transportation piece and maybe explaining why and the difference between federal, like having to untangle the federal requirements versus state requirements, if you could talk a little bit more about that.
Yes, I will attempt to, and I will probably -- I will apologize in advance if I do not get it correct. But think about it this way. We have federal requirements, state requirements, county health departments, and that's always been part of the complexity as we move forward. And so transportation is funded, and there are federal requirements for transportation. And so what the state has uncovered, and they need some time to unpack this, is there is a federal requirement for transportation to wear masks. And so we still follow in that guidelines, and it's been made very clearly at this point by the governor's office and by our OSPI and our local health authority, is they do not know if that mandate will change, and they will work to try to navigate that. And that's part of the reason why they need some of this time, and it's not just going to happen tomorrow.
Thank you.
So in the spirit of that's all we know, I think we should turn it over, and I'd like to introduce our assistant superintendent, Tony Pace, and one of our school directors, Mr. Doug Hofstadter, who have a whole team of folks that are here practicing social distancing. And so we might rotate some voices here and there, but we're going to talk about our continuous achievement process and plans. Ms. Pace?
Well, thank you. I think you've covered everything, and we can get started. Basically, we have this presentation broken down into three parts. First part that Dr. Doug Hofstadter will give is an overview of the process, and then we'll get more specific with our principals, and they'll be talking about some of the things that they're actually using from their CAP plans in their school, and then we'll have it open for questions. So with that, Dr. Hofstadter, you're on.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Superintendent Garcia. Welcome, President Bonbright, members of the board, Superintendent Garcia. It's wonderful to be here this evening. We are going to talk about the CAP, which is the acronym for the Continuous Achievement Plan, and I'm looking to see if the PowerPoint's going to be up there or do I have to click There we go. So this is kind of just the cycle of inquiry that we follow. Won't spend a lot of time here because, as Director Bonbright said in her opening comments, this is very concise. We're trying to keep this concise for the study session. But you can see kind of our cycle of inquiry of how we come up with not only the CAP process but also the CAP plans that school buildings put together. The why, the WAC directs us to have a school improvement plan, not just us as Tacoma Public Schools but all schools in the state. We know that our promise to students is grounded in our strategic plan, specifically Goal One, which is academic excellence, and Goal Four, I believe, is health and safety. Both are encompassed in this CAP plan. As a system, we're always looking to improve our effectiveness and efficiency, and we know that supporting students is a team effort. Teachers, building administrators, district administrators, we're all working together on behalf of our students. There are two categories of schools that we really focus on, comprehensive schools and targeted three-plus schools. And I'll talk more about the fact that all our schools create a school improvement plan. But targeted three-plus schools means these schools have three or more student groups that are falling behind below a state-identified level. And so that's why there's called three-plus, because three or more student groups in falling below a level. And then comprehensive schools are if the composite of those student groups makes the all-student group fall below that student level, then they're comprehensive schools. So all students, and not all students, but comprehensive overview of the student groups. If it's all students, they're comprehensive. If it's just a certain subgroups, three or more, they're targeted three-plus. So what is CAP? So like in introduction, I said it's the Continuous Achievement Plan Process. It's an approach we've been using in Tacoma since the 1718 school year, and it's really our school improvement plan for all our schools. Again, like I said, the WAC dictates that all schools in the state have a school improvement plan. Our school improvement plan that we call the CAP, the Continuous Achievement Plan. Our strategic plan serves as the foundation of the CAP. It's a continuous process. This year, we have two iterations of CAP. We have CAP Semester One, which we've completed, and just today, day-to-day at the schools, they started to work on CAP Semester Two. So it is a continuous, evolving process that responds to data that the schools are collecting in their classrooms. So the process, lots on this slide, but I'll just kind of focus that it's going on for months. You know, we include lots of different stakeholders in creating the process. You can see we started with principals, learning directors. We bring in principals for a CAP summit in June. Then in August, at our Admin Institute, we go further into CAP. September, teachers are provided training during the day-to-day that we had at the beginning of September. And then October is when we finalize the CAP. Principals and their teachers' teams take advantage of late arrival days, and the teachers work in those teams to finalize and to work on the CAP components. So just to show you that it's pretty an extensive process. So what changed between -- I said CAP started in 1718 to now, to this year, to 2122? So we had a shift, and you'll see there are kind of three big buckets to CAP. There's the academic bucket, the social-emotional learning bucket, and the discipline bucket. And so our school teams create goals, action steps, and then monitor progress around those action steps on these three areas, academics, social-emotional, and discipline. One thing I will highlight about the academics is that second bullet where it says not chasing SBA. What that means is we give the SBA generally once a year. There's an exception this year because of COVID, but generally once a year in the spring. And we don't want to rely on this SBA as being our only monitoring indicator to determine our effectiveness. And so we've really put systems in place. Our principals have done a great job working with their teachers to get them to do what we call formative assessments or formative checks so we can change our action steps if they're not showing progress.
Doug, can I ask a question? Could you clarify SBA for those who may not know and those that are listening?
Yes. SBA is an abbreviation for Smarter Balanced Assessment. It's the state assessment that all schools in the state give to their students, grades three through 10.
Thank you.
So this is a busy slide, hard to see. I'll just focus on a few things. You'll see at the very top, it has math and ELA. Those are the two subject areas that this year's CAP has focused on, which are the two main core areas of the Smarter Balanced Assessment or SBA. That doesn't mean that science, social studies, electives aren't part of the plan. They certainly are because we know that there's math in science. We know there's math in electives. We know there's English skills in social studies, in CTE, there's technical reading, technical writing. So they can be part of the plan, but it's about, it's around math and science, math and ELA goals. We're focused on standards, and so the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which is the state assessment, is aligned to standards, and we teach to those standards so that when they do take the SBA, their results are consistent with what we're seeing in the classroom. We focus on three tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three. Tier one simply means the core action steps, action steps we take in the classroom with all our students. Tier two simply means there may be some students in that core setting that need something different, and so we'll group them accordingly and teach them those strategies in the small groups. And then tier three takes place outside of the core classroom, usually in an intervention period, an ELL class, or a special ed class. So those are the three tiers. And then you can see, we talk about progress monitoring, that cycle of feedback, which is so important for teachers to consider. And then when the next quarter begins, we start all over. We look at our results and start with our plan. One last thing that I wanted to bring up that's part of this CAP is a leadership plan. Principals put together a plan, and you can see, we ask them, "What are your core beliefs as a principal? What kind of whole-child components are you putting into your leadership plan that when you meet with your staff? And also, what whole educator components are you putting in there to make sure that staff are feeling cared for and their time is being honored?" Because we know this has been, especially this year, it's been very difficult for staff with, and students, coming back after being out with, you know, not full-time face-to-face last year. So it's been a challenging year, and so I highlighted those three things. You can see there's more. But principal core beliefs, whole child, whole educator, is also an important part of the principal leadership plan. So now we get to the best part of our presentation, and that's to hear from our principals. With us this evening are Mr. Don Kreider. He's the principal at Stewart Middle School. Also here is Ms. Anita Roth. She is the principal at Edison Elementary. She's right there. And then we also have with us Ms. Lysandra Ness. She's the principal at Foss High School. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kreider first, and he's going to walk through.
Doug, before you get up, let me make sure that there are no questions because that was a lot of information to come pretty quickly.
Well, we do have questions at the end.
We're going to pause right now.
Take a breath.
And we're going to see if there's anything around the process that we need to discuss.
Okay. I did give a lot.
Okay. So anybody have any thoughts or wonderings based on what you heard or confusions? It was a lot. And I know the one thing that I would just say, that maybe those of you that are explaining it are going to really touch on this, but so these are the big picture presentation of what a CAP plan is and what our wonderful principals are going to do is tell it how applies to each, to individual students and to the teachers in the classrooms and how it affects the way they teach. So I'm assuming that that's your role. So anything, any questions from what you heard or wonderings about process?
I have a clarifying question, just for sort of historical context with the 3.0. Like, was the pieces that are in the academic flowchart now, how are they different from where they were before?
They are, we have called out cell in this CAP plan and called out discipline data. So the Goal Four, health and safety, so that would be the cell and the discipline part. Goal One, academic excellence, that's the academic part.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, again, that's social-emotional learning.
Correct.
How do you know if it's on? Is it on?
Yeah.
Cool. Okay. So my question would be, in the past three years, targeted three-plus schools and comprehensive schools, how often are these schools listed here on this list? I mean, I've served these areas, so I've heard about them being on these lists before, and just something for the team to think about, how we're approaching certain schools who end up on the targeted three-plus and comprehensive list repeatedly?
Yeah, that's a good question. Thanks for that question. As a team, as a CAP team, we do focus on the targeted three-plus and comprehensive schools. Before COVID, we went out to those schools and visited them as a team to give them face-to-face one-on-one support or group to principal support. That's different between what we do for targeted, that would be two or less. We don't go out to schools and meet with the teams like we do for targeted three-plus and comprehensive. That's kind of our response, kind of a short answer to that. Maybe your bigger question also has to do with the state and how often do they revisit schools that are on the list? It's kind of a three-year cycle. It's not kind of, it is a three-year cycle. The last time this was updated was February 2020, so right when we started, because we didn't have SBA spring of 2020. We didn't have SBA spring of 2021. So you can kind of consider it old data because it's really based on the SBA results from 2017 to 2019, and here we are in 2022. So this spring's data will help reset, maybe if schools could fall off the list or maybe additional schools are added to it.
Okay.
I think it's also important to note that one of the biggest shifts in school improvement is we recognize as a community that there are multiple benchmarks, multiple ways. And there are also multiple variables to student achievement. And when Doug talked about not chasing the test, we use the test as a single point of data. But we try to put the data back into the professionals' hands around learning standards, which learning standards. And our efforts are about what is our collective intentional plan to improve in some of those areas versus a one-time test. And so it's about building a culture because in our society, there's always that one-time snapshot, and that's tough when there's a variable of, you know, my son, if you asked him to take a test today, based on his day, would have a very difficult time. And so we're trying to create a culture that says, although the state requires us to label you this way, we're more interested in how are our teams coming together to look at their data, set intentionality in their action plans, which I think you're going to see tonight, and recognize the growth versus that static point. And you are correct. It is not unlike, and you see this all across the state, high-impact communities oftentimes are labeled time after time, and the subtlety that Doug mentioned is this three-year rolling average. So even if a school has an amazing growth in a year or even two years, that third year may have that impact. And so it is important for our community to understand it is about growth and not a only single test.
Thank you. Okay. Director Stroger, do you have anything? Okay.
All right.
Oh, Director Leon. You don't have to push it. It's on.
Do I have to push it?
It's on.
It's on. I did push it. I might have turned it off.
No. We've all been pushing it, and it's doing nothing because it's on.
So as we hear from the principals and the rest of your teams, I think you'll probably touch on this, but I'd like to hear, if you don't already have it in your discussion points, how the social-emotional learning piece around restorative justice is being handled at your school, what you think's going well, what could be improved, specifically around safety and exclusionary data. So for the public, exclusion means like detention, suspensions, those type of things, and disproportionate groups that are being excluded, how we're doing better at that. So, thanks.
And if we don't get to those tonight, because I want to offer our principals a little freedom, because I know that we asked you to be very tight with which goal that they were going to present.
Sure.
We welcome that opportunity, and I know that principals or other colleagues, we can come back and dive into that in a future work study. We have also really tried to help our staffs know that you can't do this level of depth work in every different category. There's just not enough time in the day. So we have asked them to say, "What are some focuses?" So if we don't see that tonight, then we can either bring these folks back or another group of folks that have some more specifics for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're ready.
All right. So now, Mr. Don Kreider, Principal of Stewart, will step to the mic.
Superintendent Garcia and Board of Directors, thanks for taking the time to listen to principals in schools. And the question was asked, "What does this process look like compared to what it was four years ago?" And I will tell you that four years ago, I had one plan for a building. I now have 19. And you would say, "Wow, that seems daunting." And I'll tell you that it's
And you would say, wow, that seems daunting, and I'll tell you that it's not. Especially in a year like this has been, we would think that this would be overwhelming for principals. There's a lot of things that are overwhelming for principals. This is not one of them. And I would like to speak, before I jump into, to my portion of it, I'd like to kind of speak to the intentionality of this process, which has been really appreciated by principals. And so, at least from my perspective, what we've seen from the SIP plans that we had four years ago to the CAP 3.0 that we have now, is an intentionality towards decentralization of the responsibility that used to be owned by principals, that's now decentralized out to the professional learning communities, which is where the voice of instructional change should take place. And that's where it is at this point, and it's super effective and it's super, it's very, very appreciated by me and also my colleagues. And so there's three areas the district has done really well in launching out this new thing. I'll tell you, this is, many of us said, this is probably not the year to take this on. But it only, we did it intentionally. And there were three areas, one area is systems. We set up two really, really important systems. Personnel is another important area. And the last thing is allowing the buildings to set up their own protocols. And so when we look at systems, two important systems came through. The first system was the base camp system that we opened up for teachers, in which they direct, had direct access to their CAP plans, these 19 CAP plans that I talked about. And within it, we embedded the data that they didn't have to go look for. And so streamlining that process, but also making it available for all teachers to look at other CAP plans and to see kind of where the, the left and the right teacher was going, was super, was super effective. The, the next area was, that we utilized was the late start. It may, may not seem to you to be, it may not jump out to you as an effective way, but we really, schools utilized this as an effective way for teachers, instructional coaches, and for SCDMs to, to guide this work and these PLCs and this instructional change during that time. So those are two areas that made it easy on principals. The next is in personnel. And we saw, we saw our instructional coaches step up and do incredible work this year. Teaching and learning really led the way, which took a lot of the onus off us as principals, and allowed our coaches to step up and keep that long-range goal while we were dealing with the day-to-day issues. And so that was, that was a, a big win for principals. And the second thing, I'm going to sort of call out the level directors, because in August and September, the level directors were packaging things for us, and we were able to then fit it to, fit all the opportunities that they had for CAP within what our schools needed. So our instructional coach and I were able to sit down and, and build a skeleton for our, for our teams that they then could, those, those individual 19 teams, those CAP teams could create and use a skeleton that was specific to Stewart. That's completely different than Baker, completely different than First Creek, because there are different needs for different schools. So we have, we had a huge latitude there that was very effective. And the next thing we did that was effective was we were able to overlap the work that our teachers were already doing and our administrators were already doing with the evaluation protocols that are required by the state, and we wrapped CAP up underneath that. So in October, when we were having our national counseling with teachers, we were talking about CAP. And in November, when we were in there doing our observations that we were doing anyway, we were focusing that, those observation on, on the CAP work and the PLC work that went along with it. So giving schools that opportunity to, to move CAP where they needed to was, was very effective. And, and it allowed me, especially with the use of that coach, to step back and from focusing on compliance and moving towards being a leader of learning, that we want all of our principals to be. So when we take a look at our CAP plan, what I've shown you is that skeleton, example of that skeleton that Stewart created, and it's much, it's, it's longer than this, it's about two pages long. And it's, you can see there's sentence stems there, in which our CAP teams all utilize the same stems and filled in the things that were particular to their PLC work. And so we, so in September, they created SMARTY goals via this, this device. And then in October, they created these action plans, these three action plans for each of our tiers that Dr. Hostetter talked about. And so this is an example of tier one for our whole class, in which a math team at Stewart has created, used that skeleton framework that we have, that we've set up for them, and they've built around this SMARTY goal. And then SMARTY goals are SMART goals, which are goals that, that are specific and measurable and so forth there. It's an acronym, to be honest. But what we've added on this year is inclusion and equity. And so when you read through our SMART, through this action plan for a whole class, you'll see that, you'll see that question about equity and inclusion coming through in our instructional plans for our PLCs.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
There've been a few acronyms.
Gotcha.
And just because we also have people that are listening, and some of us might be a little rusty on our acronyms, I was wondering if you could just describe what SIP, SCDM, and PLC are, just for those that may not be aware.
Sure, you bet.
Please.
I apologize. SIP is a school improvement plan, that's, that's what our CAP has morphed into with CAP 3.0. SCDM is school-centered decision-making, which are, which are our teacher and, and staff-led decision-making protocols that are specified within our CBAs. And what was the third one?
PLC.
Professional learning communities, which are essentially teacher and classroom-specific opportunities that we've, that we've built for, for professionals to collaborate on educational outcomes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is, is it okay if we go through all three and then we can maybe ask some questions? I want to be cautious about our time, I know we have budget and there as well.
So I will be followed by Anita Roth.
Thank you for having me here tonight, board members and Dr. Garcia, Josh Garcia. I can only call him Josh. I wanted to share with you kind of our morph, not a morph, it's just a focus that we try to bring to the work, in which we're making it actionable each day with the teacher. So one of the things that the old school improvement plan did was it was built and it kind of sat on the shelf and then got a report at the end of the year, like, here's what we did. It was never something that we had as a living, breathing document every day. So with our work around late starts and professional learning communities, and I'm hoping I'm going to remember how to use one of these, we've wrapped that around our CAP. So I've taken the work from the, from the PLC plus with Fisher and Frey model, and taken that and broken it into some sessions that I have staff do on those late starts, in which they're building a plan that is just parallel to the CAP plan, but it's in a six-to-eight week cycle. So they're moving through that, and they end up using the goal they write there in their CAP plan also. But it has them diving deeper each week into that plan for what instructional strategies they're using, how they're monitoring student growth, how they're making adjustments to that learning. So it takes that, two times a year, CAP plan shrinks it down to something actionable that they're coming back to, two to three times a month in our PLC cycle, our professional learning community cycle. So you can see here, this first session, we set some norms, and the second session, they take a standard from the Washington State Standards, Learning Standards, and they break it down into the chunks that need to happen to be able to achieve that standard. Then they give a pre-assessment to be able to measure where the students are for that standard, and from that, they write that SMARTY goal. And then they build the instructional strategies and the groups that they're going to focus on during that time. In-class interventions are the main focus, but there's also a component for them kids who need to have additional intervention outside that in-class intervention. But it's really meant to have that team look at their strategies that they're going to bring each day during that cycle to support students. And they monitor that and evaluate the results, and then reflect on the outcomes. Oops, wrong one. There we go. So I want to talk about that results piece. We, this is our first year at Edison enrolling this out. Every staff's different. My prior staff, we did the deep dive into the whole book and everything. This staff was ready to take off on the ground, so I just walked them through the process and we modeled that and did it together in this first cycle. They've started their second cycle, and today, it's kind of nicely matches up with Data Day, they were able to take their work in that PLC and start implementing it and typing it into the format that we have for, for CAP. And it just rolled nicely into that. Some of the wording may not be exactly the same, but it doesn't take much of a tweak to make them. The action steps are the same things that they've already planned out within that. The unit unpacking is the progression of learning they've already done from that standard. So it matches up nicely, and they've had an extended time to dive into this in the past month with our PLCs. So then this group, they, this was a fifth grade, and so they, when they did their pre-assessment, they had 30, oops, my glasses can't see that far, 31% in the intervention, 34% in the far from reaching the standard, and then 12 and 22%. And you can see the growth by the end of that time that they made. And I love this quote by one of my teachers. She said, you know what, I was kind of mixed on this whole PLC piece, but that what we pay attention to improves, and that's the truth. And that's really what drives this, the CAP plan, the PLC work, that which we keep in front of us improves. And whether it be academics or social-emotional or exclusionary data, that what we pay attention to makes improvement, with the right supports. There's the caveat with that. So you'll see their SMART goal down below. They had started out with the percentage of fifth-grade students scoring proficient or higher, and multiplying two-digit, by two-digit, using representation will increase by 22.4, from 22.4 to 69 by November 23rd. And they, they did meet that easily with their CAP goal, with their, with their CAP goal and their PLC goal. The most important part to me, though, is that we don't just leave it there, it's that reflection by the teacher. So one of the intentional steps within the PLC process that we then bring to that CAP piece and roll it all together, is that the teachers spend a session reflecting on what they learned from this, what were the barriers, what did the data tell them about who got left behind, and what they need to do about that. So what group of students or individuals in their classroom were left behind? And did they fall into, they look at that by category. ML, multilingual, special education, ethnicity, boy, girl, to see if there's a trend, or if it was just overall individual students and there was no trend. But that's one of the questions that they ask themselves in that reflection, is to look at that data and break it down, who was left behind? And then what's the plan to continue their growth to catch that? So it's not like, here's the ones that didn't reach it, done, and now we move on. It's what's the intentional plan after that, to keep supporting them. So that's how we weave it all together. And so these, you can see the, this is some of their pieces, what the teacher factors contribute to the results. And so they talked about small groups, spiral review, the math games, daily individualized instruction, consistent feedback with exit tickets. This year, the spiral review is a big piece, because we know kids missed skills from prior two years that may be impacting their achievement moving forward. So that was one that they really took on. How will our results from this cycle assist in preparing for the next cycle? You can see, keeping those small groups, which may sound easy, but you have to figure in your schedule how to make that happen. So it's, it's harder than it sounds, because you have a finite amount of time to squeeze it all in. Moved on to the next potential need, place value, and spiral review to reinforce mastery. So they really spent a whole session just talking about those pieces and that reflection. And to me, that's the power of using a PLC model, and then having that CAP process then is the piece that shares out broader, so we have that information as a district about how we're doing in those pieces. I think that was it for me. So. Does anyone have any questions quickly for Anita? Okay, thank you, great job.
Tracy, you're doing a phenomenal job. I'm over there watching you like rotate these.
I too would like to thank the board and superintendent and the assistant superintendents for having us here today to be able to talk about the CAP. And thank you, Director Hostetter, for inviting me to present Foss's data. So I look forward to this opportunity. Foss has been blessed with being able to do professional learning communities for the entire time that I have been there. So we've been doing PLCs for seven years, and we, we use the DeFor model. And what I really enjoy for this year is that the CAP 3.0 and the way in which it's evolved, we continue to even use information and sources that were created, created along the way. So for example, Zeke created a wonderful Excel spreadsheet for us to enter data in a couple of years ago, and we did not do away with that data spreadsheet. Our staff still use that to track their data so that we can really see the growth. It allows a really nice coding of yellow, green, and red in regards to where students have or have not grown and where, what students we need to focus on a little bit more. So I am pleased to share that this particular dataset comes from our ninth grade English. And, you know, we set a high bar of 80% achievement. And when we fill out the CAP goal section, it basically tells us to only do a 15 to 20% increase in regards to the starting point to the endpoint. And as you saw with my colleagues, we all shot way above and beyond that piece. And so, in Foss style, you know, we wanted to stay in that, that range of 80% or better. We don't, we don't want even the 20% of students to not be able to achieve data, you know, to achieve their standard. And so for our ninth grade ELA, our goal was to have an 80% pass rate. And our team was our counselor and our two ninth grade teacher, English teachers, Ms. Wolf and Ms. Diamond. And then we had the ninth grade administrator, Nancy Harris Clement, and myself. And I too get to learn how to use this all over again. So as they set this, this goal back in October, and they looked at their, their unit plans, and being an IB school, they're looking at the standards and they're looking at, you know, how, which one that they're going to be focusing on. The beauty of an IB world school is that we always have to be reflective on our practices. We are required by IB to constantly be looking at the formative assessments, looking at where students are, providing opportunities for relearning and, and those types of aspects. This year, we shifted to an IB grading scale, and this, this year, we really emphasized standards-based grading, which has been an absolute wonderful outcome for our building, and it has allowed us to really focus on the learning, not on behaviors and things of that nature. It's allowed our staff to look at bias, which again is part of the CAP plan, that equity component, in our grading practices. So as they were choosing students in the CAP piece, in fact, I love that we're, we're meeting today because of having this meeting, our CAP meetings earlier today, you know, staff are asking, how many students, you know, should we be choosing? Are there certain, you know, demographic? And I said, no, let's look at, you know, where students are in regards to an IB level two student, and let's get them to three and better. And then, when we look at those list of students, I want you to then reflect on your biases that you may be seeing in the demographics of the students that were then chosen. And were there things that you, you can reflect on in regards to grading practices or interactions and things of that nature? And then reevaluate which students need to be put in here. And so that was a, a nice conversation for student, for our staff to look closely at students and the needs. They used this information also, which came from our quarter one. So they wanted to see, where did students achieve, where, how did they move? And this dataset is, again, it's pulled from the spreadsheet that Zeke had originally created a few years ago. You know, the, the results were that 69% meant, met standard, so scored a three or better. In this particular area, we're using a BAME scale versus our IB rubic, because we haven't been able to figure out how to tweak Zeke's spreadsheet to the IB scale yet. So we're, we have to kind of shift it. But you can see that the students had tremendous growth in regards to getting up to standard. So again, using a BAME scale, 52 of 71 or 73% demonstrated growth. Granted, we did only meet a 69% meeting standard, but we did have tremendous growth for our students. The ones that are in red, I will, I will share with you, they were students that we were struggling on getting to come to school. We looked at those particular students and, and really focused in on what were their needs and, and how can we reach out? And there were lots of opportunities to do that, and we haven't, we haven't forgotten them either. We're going to continue to try to get them up to standard. On this particular standard, we're still continuing to work with them into quarter two. two. So we have the philosophy of we're not there yet, or the student hasn't mastered that standard yet, but we continue to work on getting the students to the level that they need to be to be successful. With that in mind, I think that Doug cut me down to two slides.
You knew I was gonna add. A scale, beginning, approaching, meeting, and exceeding. It's matched to a four points. And so when you see the first score of a two would be at approaching, a retake of a three would be at a meeting. And we apologize, I just, yeah, Doug cut us down to two slides because Josh was teasing him and saying, there's no way you can put a principal up there with one minute a slide and talk about the complexity of their work, and with pride that they take, and representing their teams. And we, we proved that we could not do that again. So I wanted just to take a few moments to articulate that it is a snapshot of a lot, and we wanted to give you a snippet into the complexity, sophistication, and intentionality that our classroom teachers are going through with support from their administrators, with support from us. It is not easy. And it's not, you know, as you're seeing this, and if I was at home, I might be saying, well, great, with intentionality, you could do everything every time. But there are hours upon hours of collaboration, work, and that's not in addition to, but teachers go through to plan lessons, and we're greatly appreciative of that. It's vulnerable work. When you're bringing your work as a professional to the table and saying, well, here's the moves I want to make to try to get these results, sometimes they work and sometimes they don't. And this work isn't about right or wrong, it's about intentionality and leaning in. And so on behalf of all the staff, we want to thank our classroom teachers. It's not something that's taken lightly. They are very much the professionals, and they're leaning in to help our support. And you saw three examples of just some of those snippets. So we'll pause and take any questions. And I also want to make sure our budget folks get to the table.
Well, we can take as long as we need. We're not going to cut the budget folks short, so don't worry, don't panic. And does anyone have comments or questions? I want to.
I'm all, I'm full of questions, apparently. I was curious about the, the impacts, like, I don't even really know how to ask the questions, but in, in thinking about the students who have been impacted by quarantine, and like, I mean, I know that, like, there's a lot to unpack in even just that consideration, and wondering like, how within the CAP plan, how is the CAP plan being utilized? Or, or helping to keep those students on track? I'm not really sure how quite to ask that question. I feel like I'm asking a couple of questions all at the same time.
So the short answer is, is students that have been in quarantine, their learning has been impacted. And, and so when we look at the CAP plans, we have to understand that there's a story behind each one of those. And I think Lysandra touched base on that and said, okay, what happened when that read? What are we seeing in there? Because I think the wrong way is to say, oh, my gosh, you did something wrong, educator. And what we're trying to create is, is what's that story in there? So is our student achievement data going to be impacted by quarantine? Absolutely. Absolutely. When we have students that have been out for extended periods, remember the quarantine rules have changed significantly throughout the time?
Again.
So.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So.
Can I add something?
Absolutely.
Sorry?
It's okay, your name tag is still up.
One of the things that, for example, in our math classes, we've been having this conversation with regards to, you know, in reality, kids really haven't had the opportunity to really be diving deep into math for two years. And so we, by focusing on the standards that are there, and for us really having conversations in our professional learning communities in regards to the vertical alignment from algebra to geometry, pre-calc, calc, we're able to, we're really focusing in on, okay, so how, what standards are the, you know, the most important, right? Those priority standards? And how might those be looked at later on? So we can really backfill that foundation that might have been missed over the last couple of years. And so the students who have those large gaps, we are adjusting some stuff and creating some, some unit plans and activities and things of that nature, and really intentional activities for students to, to get into that concept, those concepts deeper, build that foundation, and then knowing that we're going to hit some of these other standards in these other units over here, and so that we can get them to where they need to be. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
I would also say that what the CAP plan has done is help to individualize instruction for each individual student. And I think as we've moved through the years of, of doing CAP, it's become more evident that teachers are also focused on the individualized needs of the students in their classes.
Thank you.
I was struck by how each school is very individualized to its, its, its own needs and the students that it's, it's got. But you can also see how elementary to middle to high, how there's a building block scenario going on. And I love that individuality and the, the concept being a holistic one where each child is followed. And, and there's a, there's a, it seems to be a pathway to find when they stray from the, from going in the direction, the trajectory that we, that we'd like them to see. So I was impressed with how each of you at your own schools have come up with a, a pathway forward that really is inclusive. And, you know, I'd love to at some point be able to dig in deeper in terms of the groupings, you know, both racial, ethnic, you know, whether it's English language learners, you know, how, gender, you know, how that all breaks down to see, because I think that's all very fascinating. But thank you, because I know this is tough work, it's complicated work, and it's very personal work with each child. So thank you for that. Does anybody else, Director Stroger?
It's not necessarily, is my mic on? I don't feel like I got the same echo as everybody else.
Voice is too deep.
So, so not a question, but this is a great, like, surface-level look for folks on the outside, right, seeing how, how these plans impact our individual schools. I think it was Anita who mentioned, what's the plan for those that get left behind? I think a great follow-up to this, especially for the public, could be showing, like, a presentation similar to this one, but showing like, what steps are taken to, you know, carry those kids along that get left behind.
It's a great question. So here's the challenge that we face with student data. And our classroom teachers are able to actually pick their rosters. And they're able to make instructional moves based off of a smaller group of students or sometimes individual students. We can't share that data with the public because of data laws that protect that privacy. So what the public will be able to see is a deeper analysis on the each school's website. They'll say, here's our CAP plan. And they'll be able to see the, the moves without it being, I have these students and these students fall in these categories, because we want to be able to look in the mirror and say, are there trends of which students are being successful and which ones are not? But when you break that down and personalize that data to a classroom, you're, we're under the thirty size, the N size of thirty. And so there's always going to be that tension of how much can we share? That gets to some of what I think Director Bonbright and you are articulating, but you will see a public transparency at a much deeper level, starting, I think it's next week or the following week where they'll be placed on the websites. And then you'd also be able to see what schools are doing for their cell plans. How are they incorporating some restorative justice practices and at which levels?
Right. I'm really looking forward to that.
So my comment was really quick. Back to Principal Roth from Edison. Both of my babies went to Edison, and that's my neighborhood. I really appreciate the intentionality that your school's been doing for several years. My kids are in middle school and high school now, right? But I really appreciated the quote from one of your teachers, that which we pay attention to improves. I really wanted to highlight that. I like your, the cycle of the sessions and getting to that end reflection. I heard it from Stuart, Principal Kreider, and from Principal Ness. All of your plans included that reflection time. I'm a preschool teacher, and it's like mandatory for us. And I love to see that from the beginning to the end, our, our kids in Tacoma, from the preschool level all the way up through high school, are getting that reflective piece from their teachers, and it is, we're seeing it from the higher end too, from the principals. So I really want to thank all of you for your time. And just as a preschool teacher and as an Edison fan, I'm really excited to have you guys all here tonight. Thank you so much.
Great. Does anyone have any other questions? I also want to thank the other directors, school directors who are also here, Scott and Julie, for all the work that they do. It's such a great team. And, and it seems like the changes that we've made in, over the last few years, may be influenced by, by COVID and, and the isolation problems. I think that, that it's made it stronger, and, and certainly the changes have been, you know, are showing promise. So thank you very much to everyone.
There's a few other folks that are in the crowd. Krista Harland was actually one of the first spearheads of the facilitation a number of years ago, where we started to say, so what has to be common and which has to not be common? And so I think one of the other pieces is, as we want the individuality of the classroom teacher and the PLC teams to make the instructional moves, we also want to make sure that we have a common approach to school supports and improvements, because our staffs sometimes change buildings. And we can learn from each other in, in that. So we will continue down this road, and we look forward to future updates.
Thank you.
I'm going to give our principals, because they've had some long days, permission to sneak out. And otherwise, I think I'll have to buy extra coffees if I don't let them go.
Yep.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure you guys don't want to stay?
Not for the budget.
Oh, I am too loud. There we go. Is that better?
Yep.
Well, it's hard to believe.
Oh, maybe not.
It's hard to believe that we are in budget season again. It comes by so quickly, doesn't it? Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We just want to give you a quick budget kickoff. This is not an overly in-depth presentation. It's really meant to provide you with an overview and the public with an overview of how we will go about accomplishing the completion of the budget. So I'll go ahead and get started with just a few current issues. You always have to start with where you're at to know where you're going. And I would like to introduce Kristen Bell, our Director of Budget, to give us a few notes on this slide.
Thank you. All right. So as Rosalind mentioned, you know, before we can look forward, we've got to kind of take, take a minute and see where we're at now. And there's a couple of components that, that help feed where we're at. To start with, we look at, you know, where did we end the 2021 fiscal year financially? And so we did end with a fund balance of eleven-point-six-six percent, which was about fifty-six million dollars. And board policy, as you know, requires a minimum of five percent. So that is above that, and that is, it's a good chunk of money, but it's also one-time money. And it's just, you know, various reasons that we predicted were, were going to happen just based on that 2021 school year was so unique. Next, you can see we have various COVID-19 reimbursement funding sources that we are keeping an eye on. They are applicable for this year, but also they do have future year use that we can use. And there's the ARP, which stands for American Rescue Plan. And they're all, ARP is the precursor of them. And then you can see we've got the S R two and three, ARP IDEA, and then ARP Homeless Children and Youth, and then there's also the FEMA as a resource. Our enrollment, as you know, is, is one of the main drivers of our revenue. And right now, as of our January apportionment, our enrollment is down about eight-hundred-and-sixty-one FTE. And that translates to about a net decrease in, from budget of eight-point-four million dollars. Additionally, as we go through this year, we're watching the basic education enrollment impacts, as I mentioned. Our middle school CTE is coming in lower than we had anticipated. Nutrition services, the expenditures are outpacing the revenues. Just the cost of food and the supply chain is impacting drastically the cost of that, so we're keeping an eye on that. And then also our special education department and programming, the IEPs are ongoing and changing. And so we have to react to those, which, which have cost impacts also. And then, you know, that last slide there, we're just, we are now ready for other emergencies as they come up, which you have to plan for as we know.
Just an add-on to Kristen's comment about the enrollment issues. So we lost eleven-hundred students last year, and we didn't change our budget too significantly. We, we anticipated that we would drop in enrollment, we anticipated that we wouldn't fully recover from enrollment. So we budgeted some enrollment to come back, knowing that we didn't have any clue what would really happen this year. So as the students have not returned, that's where you see the eight-hundred-and-sixty-one differential. So last year it was eleven-hundred. When we look at how much we'd lost pre-pandemic, we're about the same as we were last year to pre-pandemic. So it's not that we've lost yet another eight-hundred students in addition to the eleven-hundred. It's still that same subset, just how we budgeted is a little different. So the current action in the legislature, the legislature started in January. They are intending to finish March tenth, and they are well into the session. We're anticipating that we'll see a budget here in the next couple of days, I mean, sometime in the next week, likely, we'll see the first budget come out. Some of the major bills that we're watching, and these align very closely to the, to the legislative initiatives that the board has adopted. But our enrollment stabilization is one of them. The bills right now that are working through the legislature would provide for potentially our relief for levy. If our student enrollment has declined as it has, then the levy dollars would decline as well in, in tandem with that. And so we want to do everything we can to protect those dollars. We anticipate that the students will come back, hopefully. Or we had better start making some plans, right, to address what happens when they don't. Legislature understands that. They're grappling with the anticipation of, you know, what happens in the future and what this means, both from the levy side of the House as well as the enrollment side of the House. On the levy, it would put us in a position where we could use our nineteen-twenty enrollment one more year to calculate the levy dollars. And then after that, we'd have to see what kind of return we had for students. And then on the enrollment side, right now, where the bill is at, is it would provide us with fifty percent of our loss of enrollment that we're seeing. So they'd look at pre-pandemic, they'd look at where we are now, they'd provide us with stabilization, stabilization to meet us fifty percent of the way. Those numbers are changing ever so rapidly, though. I fully anticipate that those pieces will move into the budget for the enrollment stabilization. But we really do need the, the bill to move forward for the levy aspect. They cannot build that into the budget. There's talk of some transportation funding formula adjustments. This is something that's a very complex and ridiculous formula. I don't know how else to say it. We can't, we actually can't calculate it. We, we try our best, we do our very best to try and calculate it. But it's so complex that we come close, we want to be perfect and accurate, we can't because it's so hard. So they're working on identifying some new processes to, to have a better funding source for us. However, what they are doing is collecting and reporting data to understand better where districts are not meeting the full funding, and they have excess costs. So if there are excess costs in a district, we would be able to report that to OSPI, and OSPI would provide funding associated with that, provided that they were appropriate expenses. So it's an exciting bill to see come forward, and I think it's got a lot of potential for us. Prototypical allocation adjustments, it's a bill that's been moving forward. It has been through a number of changes. It's a very, it doesn't look anything like it did when it first started at this point. And it's also likely to be moved into the budget as well. So I think that this is just a vehicle for the legislature to have a conversation and to try to identify what sticks, so that they can move that into the budget. But it applies new prototypical funding formulas. So all of our funding is generated off of a, a standard formula. This would enhance some of those specific pieces, perhaps around counselors, perhaps around nurses, perhaps around some new social, emotional learning opportunities. And so I think we'll just have to wait and see what ends up in the budget as we move forward. As I mentioned, the budget bill is in process. I saw that there is a hearing anticipated for potentially Wednesday for the House budget. So we will have to watch and see what happens with that. I do anticipate that there will be an IPD increase, so the implicit price deflator is a cost of living adjustment that the legislature has implemented. I'm choking on my mask, I'm sorry. And once they identify what that IPD is, then we'll have to make some internal decisions around how we pay for those activities. The current state funding only covers about seventy percent of the funding that we get, the, the dollars that we would get, would cover about seventy percent of the cost of an IPD increase. The other part of that would have to be picked up either through our levy or through other programs that. We're thinking that the IPD could be as large as 5% or 6% just because of inflation that we're seeing. And I know we all see it at the grocery store and, you know, anytime we go to buy something. Looking at session law, something that's already passed through was the CARES Act or the WA CARES. And that was a long-term care tax that was applied. We had been collecting from our staffs as per the law. Will now be refunding those dollars because that was what the legislature has decided. They're going to put an 18-month moratorium on collection of those taxes. And so, we have to resend those taxes back out to our staffs. And then, just a couple of bills of note. Community eligibility is an incredible program that provides free meals to all students. And we are eligible. We are actively looking into the implications and the complications of that. The bill that they've put forth would require us to participate in certain formats. And so, we are just monitoring and tracking to see what the implications of that bill are in relationship to our own internal investigation of the complexities of it. And then, lastly on this list was the Senate bill to provide benefits for contracted transportation providers or other contractors. It doesn't matter who they are. But for certain contractors, we would have to provide health benefits equal to the types of benefits that we provide internally. Technically, that bill is dead at this point. But everything has a chance to come back to life in the legislature. So, we're not going to count anything out. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Kristen for some enrollment conversation.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Of course.
I thought I heard, and maybe President Baumbright can clarify that, or I thought that the Senate had already released their budget. I thought that happened this week. Do you, did you, I thought I heard that on the WASD call today. But anyways, just of note, somewhere.
I'll check the Leach site.
I don't know. Somewhere, I thought I heard that.
I'll check the Leach site.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. So, moving on to the actual numbers around our enrollment as we look forward to next year. You can see there on the left here, we budgeted 27,880 students. And the demographer, as Roslin mentioned before, he's catching up. So, you know, we had the, to go into last year, you know, he thought it was going to be a normal year. And so, you saw that huge drop. But now, you know, you can, he's saying 867 down for next year from a budgetary or a demographer standpoint is closer to, you know, right now, snapshot was, we have 26,908 students as of January. And he's projecting about 27,013 students for next year. So, it's a tighter number to our actuals, which, so we wouldn't be sitting here a year from now saying, we're down 800 kids again because we're trying to, you know, calibrate a little bit more for that.
Can I ask, can I ask a question for clarification? So, the number that the demographer gives us for the next budget year is also the number that we then base our staffing plan on in May when we come down to?
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure that that was.
It's one of the, it's one of the main drivers.
It's the main definers.
Yeah.
And that's an important subtlety is, we use multiple points of data, right? And so, the demographer is historically, has been very close, less than 1% holistically. But we always see neighborhoods change. We always see movement inside a neighborhood. So, the team sits down and looks at each oil in the neighborhood. We're able to start to look at what are other things we know. And so, it's not a strict, this is the only data piece. And so, I just want to call out and recognize it, Kristen, saying it's one piece. It's the beginning of the conversation.
And due to, we have high mobility. And so, we do keep trend data by building about how tight the demographer is to actuals on each individual building. So, that does help us kind of predict. Means, you know, we're always looking six months ahead to try and get it right. But Josh is right. We do multiple areas.
Yep. Director Leon?
So, just a little more clarification. So, when you say we're down the 800, that's down from what the demographer told us the year before? Or that's down from what we had actual students the year before?
So, a year ago, demographer said, he thought we were going to have 27,880 students for this year. In actuality, when we budget, we take a discount because we're conservative. And we also, we, this is a headcount versus we get funded out of FTE. So, there's a little bit of a conversion there. So, if you were to look at our budget right now, you wouldn't see that exact number because this is what he came in and said. So, we, you know, we massage it a little bit. But he says 27,880 last year as opposed to he's saying 27,13 for next year. So, that 867 is his, the variance between his projections from year to year.
Budget to budget, yeah.
And I wonder if we can also find out, how are we doing compared to other districts with our same demographics percentage-wise down or in our region? Are we about where everybody else is?
So, I want to, I want to be careful about the term "down," right? So, it's a budgetary piece around a prediction. But if you look at that middle column, the January apportionment, right? So, on this, I don't know if it's on that screen. Our current enrollment is 26,908. And so, what the demographer's saying currently in January, you're actually going to, don't anticipate you're going to come all the way back up to 27,880. Only come, anticipate you're going to come back at 27,013 kids. And so, it's a little bit of recalibration. Now, the wild card is, is when you look at the budget variances, is, well, where did most of those predicted kids, what levels? It was really at the elementary schools.
Yep.
And so, that's the unknown for all of us, right? We didn't have vaccinations at that point. We don't have, and so, we have a lot of variables. And so, when we say "down," it's from a budget perspective, not necessarily, that may be our new norm. To answer your question is, you know, Pierce County enrollment is pretty stable. So, we're kind of an outlier in Pierce County. King County enrollment, when we look at those, they've been down in certain areas. And so, it's really fluid and unknown in this COVID time. And so, it's my random way of saying, we're not really sure, like districts, like districts, we're seeing trends on the I-5 urban corridor that are different than even county.
One thing I can say to add to some context to that is, when we're looking at that enrollment stabilization bill that's rolling through the legislature, there are 230 out of 295 school districts where the stabilization plan that they have put together would be applicable. So, there's that many school districts across the state that have lost enrollment. And I think across the whole system, it's like 100,000 students.
That's significant.
It is.
And it's an art.
Where are they? And so, that's part of the challenge. The only other piece that I just want to add for contextual places, when we talk about staffing, there is this, what we call a school scale score that we apply. So, we apply enhancements based off of students free and reduced lunch rates, special education population, English language learners. I'm going to stop there because I'll butcher it at one point. And so, it's not as, that's another point that when Kristen says it is a point, it's not just straight numbers that go to a school, but also what are the additional supports that are needed?
Super complex.
I would just add also, like, there are a lot of people in COVID who said, you know what? I don't, we don't have to live the way that we've been living. And so, I think that there is a consideration of the people relocated. People made some substantial changes to their lives because it was like this point in time where there was, for those who had the ability, like, there are just a number of people who, I think, made different decisions. And so, I don't know that you can ever really calculate that in terms of, you know, how that, I just think that that's part of that unknown piece.
I appreciate that. And I think what we've seen is this historical trend of around these 27,000, 28,000. And what I think we have to all be prepared to do is, is next year will be a very insightful year, right? When we think about trend data, we always think about three points going in the same direction. In the fall, we'll have to see, is that still the same direction? And if so, what we all need to be prepared for is, we'll need to adjust program accordingly at that point. We're not there yet. We'll see some pieces. But that's where it's going to be very important is which, how many, are they coming back? All those variables will be at play. So, we just wanted to give you a little bit of predictability.
I think a celebration too, as you look at our high schools, our high school's actually going up.
Yeah.
You know, and historically, high school goes down because of the dropouts. And so, the programming that we have is retaining our high schoolers. And so, that's the.
Attracting.
Yeah. It's a celebration really for just overall. If you were to look 10 years ago, your high school numbers, you know, generally go down. So, it definitely is the elementary is where we're seeing those low numbers. So.
So, I'm going to talk just a little bit about some of the new considerations that we have to incorporate into the next year's budget. Hunt is going to have 8th grade. They currently open with 6th and 7th grade. And so, they'll be adding another grade. It's not an overly difficult thing that we have to address, but it's something we want to be considerate and aware of. And we want to make sure we're all aware of it, too. The community eligibility program that I mentioned before is something that we'll be continuing to work through and making sure that we're doing all of our internal investigations and ensuring that we've got our ducks in a row before we get going with the program. Bargaining impacts, we will be actively bargaining five different bargaining groups over this, over this next summertime. So, it's going to be a hefty time for us to investigate where we're at, trying to make sure that we're building in appropriate resources so that we're not surprised by anything that comes through the bargaining table. Enrollment impacts we just discussed are something that we have to factor in. We've got to make sure we're planning appropriately. There's staffing implications that come along with that. We have S R dollars, however, which is the last item there that helps to bridge that gap. We don't have to, we don't have to be too concerned in relationship to maybe some other school districts that don't have those resources available to them. Moving into the budget cycle.
Okay. Alright, so, we align our budget, our budgeting by priorities process, we do align with the legislative cycle. And so, you can see there on the slide, that was last year. And so, this year is a review year. And so, it's a little bit lighter from a budgeting by priorities perspective. But we will continue to apply the guiding principles for all the decisions, my glasses are fogging up, I'm sorry, for all of the decisions. There'll be, there'll be programming adjustments as needed, but they'll be minimal. Again, we'll have adjustments to the rates and the drivers from whatever the legislature comes in. And then the, any collective bargaining agreement changes. And then, those are for the general fund. And then our other funds, ASB, debt service, and so forth, those will be based on, you know, activities or changes that are unique to those funds. Moving into timelines of just kind of what to expect over the next few months, this slide here is more of an annual every year. These are the things that we do, you know. And you can see the legislative sessions out right now. And we're kicking off spring staffing here in a week or two. We're going to start doing that. And legally, the reduction in force, just identification would have, if we were in a year where we were doing that, then that would be the time we would determine that. July 10 is, we are legally required to submit a budget to the ESD, Educational Service District. And they review it and give us feedback and back and forth and back and forth. And then, we do have a public hearing in June. And we are, our budget needs to be adopted by August 31. Technically, we will attempt to do one in July. I think I have that on the next slide, actually. And then, we, you know, circle back around. And then, we have fall staffing. And we calibrate from what we budgeted to where, what are the actual needs based on our predictions. Again, another kind of view of the timeline just based by, it's divided by Board and legislature's functional. Thank you. So, I think Friday report last week, we shared the guiding principles that were adopted by you last year. The legislative update is happening next week. Staffing update we'll give you in March. And then, we will have some individual updates with each one of you in April, similar to what we did last year. And then, again, more legislative updates as we get to learn more and the impacts and so forth. And then, those June hearings. And then, again, there's that anticipated adoption in July. That's going to be the best-case scenario if we can do that. And then, we do have August as our second chance, just in case something falls through and, you know, whatever. We just want that backup time. As you recall, last year, we did a budget calculator on our website as part of our community outreach. And because we're in this interim year or review year, we're going to tweak it a little bit. And it's going to be more, it's an interactive tool, but it's going to provide feedback, we're going to gather feedback. It won't have actual numbers on it, but it's feedback of programming and things like that. So, we can gather information of what the priorities are from the community. And that will, March through June, we'll gather that. And then, legislature again is planned to end in the end of April. And then, our staffing process is again, pretty much that same time. And then, we start to balance that budget in May and June. And then, we will also have some community presentations of the budget in that same timeframe. I think that's it.
So, I'm going to handle some of the communication aspects of our annual budget. And your cabinet, the superintendent's cabinet, is exceptionally involved in the budgeting process. And in the first part of the budget cycle, in the first year, they meet, I don't know, we do like every other week for six or eight weeks. It's an intensive process. In this off-year, we've just booked on the calendar three dates to have our regular meetings to, once the legislature is complete, that we'll be able to get together in four-hour blocks and have conversations around the implications of what came through on the budget and try to work through any kind of programmatic issues or legislative issues that have arisen based on that. And then, maybe we'll have a little more information from bargaining at that time as well. So, that we'll be able to make any kind of accommodations or flexing or additions that we need at that time. The Board plays a significant part in the development of the budget. You help to define parameters and keep us in unexpected guidelines. You are going to be working with us to monitor what's happening with the legislative cycle to help us, will help you understand what we're, what kind of changes and implications there are. And then, you'll provide us with feedback and guidance based on that. It's important for you to have an opportunity to engage with the public around the budget. And so, we try to build in that as part of our process. And then, finally, of course, you are the ones who adopt the budget. So, this is an important aspect of the actual budgeting process. We'll be working on some community engagement activities. These aren't dissimilar to previous years. As Kristen indicated, we'll have the budget interactive tool. I think, I'm actually very excited about the tool. This provides us with a clearer and easier way for us to understand priorities of the community. I think that the tool that we used last year was a great educational tool. And I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that it's a bad tool and that we'll stop using it. But on this off-year, I'm not sure that it provides as much value as it might in the first year of the budget.
Yeah. So, just a little history with the budgeting for priorities is, we really worked, I don't know, how many years have we?
It's like eight, nine.
Eight years. Just, I know that all of you weren't here at that point. It's just, what we found is, the yearly budget without a two-year cycle didn't match up to the way the funding was going. But we also found that we were starting and stopping. We were starting and stopping. And so, Roslin, at the time, really led us through a process. It was based out of a model that is not traditionally two schools. We learned a lot from the city of Redmond, I think, at the time, in there. And so, this idea of, and where I haven't gone through it, is that you, you have that large bucket of resources that comes in that full legislative cycle. So, you're not seeing a lot of adjustments coming at the legislative. And so, design something that matches that cycle. And so, when we say off-year, these are the short sessions. And traditionally, we do not see large movement in the budget at the legislative. And most of our resources come from the legislative. And so, that's what we mean by off-year. It's not a big adjustment time typically at the legislative level.
Thank you.
And is it also true that we don't, like, the funding adjustments that we're seeing currently are related to COVID, mostly COVID impacts and the things that, like with transportation, that were exposed or maybe better understood and seen? So, it feels like this, like, we're seeing some change financially, but that really still is tied to COVID. Is that a slow assessment?
There's, there's two things to it, right? So, one is absolutely what you're saying, that the legislature is responding to the needs and the implications of what has happened over the last two years. But then, there's this other nuance, too. This is the first year that the legislature has had a large surplus based on revenues in a long time. And it's in the off-year. And they're responding to that as well. So, this may be an anomaly of a year where we do see some additional funding that's coming in to do unique things that would typically only happen in the, in the primary year of a legislative cycle. So, I think that we'll, we'll see how that plays out for us and where the legislature ends up taking it. But it is, it is a unique year. Every year's a unique year at this point. I haven't met one yet that's not unique.
We're all unicorns. Every year's a unicorn.
And they're beautiful.
And I would just add that some of the.
ends up taking it, but it is, it is a unique year. Every year's a unique year at this point. I haven't met one yet that's not me.
We're all unicorns. Every year's a unicorn.
And they're beautiful.
And I would just add that some of the work that is, is grounded, right, when the legislators have been making efforts to look at the prototypical model, some of the work that they've done last year in counseling services, we know that some of those additional resources are coming, it's the economy of scale in that. And so it is that balance of what is already, what are we already working towards, and then being responsive.
Just to quickly touch on these items, I mean, we want to make sure that we have a public presentation for the community, and of course, we have our formal public hearing that we're required to have by law, where we can seek feedback in advance of actually adopting the budget. It's important for us to have a wide net of communication and to engage many different types of people in our community, our, our school communities. We want to make sure that we're investing with community members, our labor partners, our principal group, and I've got one more up there that I don't remember off the top of my head. Oh, just general departments and program managers that supervise budget aspects of things. We'll be bringing to you next week our financial update, and then at the board meeting next week, legislative and budget, budget updates, as Kristen indicated, will continue through June likely, and then we're hoping that quickly we'll be able to get an interactive tool released, you know, in the next few weeks. Lastly, I would just say that from the guiding principle perspective, you clarified this for us in the beginning of last year, at the start of our two-year cycle, we intended to continue using these, and really, I think we wrote them so that they can be continued moving forward. However, on that full two-year cycle is when I think we will be, it would be most beneficial to address any kind of adjustments. So it's important to note though, these are intended for us to evaluate your directions to us, or to evaluate the needs of all students when we're making decisions, to, to be sensitive to our diverse needs, work to eliminate disparities and gaps, and then of course, follow the strategic plan that you've implemented. And so those are three tenants that I think are the most important in the guiding principles that we have to keep forefront of our conversations as we continue to make decisions about future funding.
So those are applied with the original budget requister, with the review team that looks at the bid packages, and it's a cross-departmental team, and some, a variety of others, at the cabinet level, and then hopefully, that you'll see those implemented as you're approving the high-level overall budget.
Thank you. So does anyone have any questions for Roslin or Kristen?
Just a point of clarification about the budget calculator, because I know the community did take advantage of that opportunity. I just want to be sure that I understood correctly. So it's going to be modified, not necessarily to compute numbers, but taking the data that we put forth, like, here's what we're going to do with these dollars, and it's going to provide an opportunity for community feedback.
It's actually a really exciting tool, and it's something that I think, we've done it before, but through a formal survey, and it's, it's a little more wonky, or maybe sometimes we've done it through a, a survey monkey tool. But it actually allows us, this, this off-year tool, allows us to create priority expectations, like, you know, do you like class size? Do you like, you know, whatever they may be, the 100 different types, I'm sure we could do. And then they're able to rank them based on their beliefs of how much we should invest, or how deeply we should invest in those activities. And so I think that it might provide us with more meaningful feedback as to what the community's expectations are, that we can actually engage with in a different way. And I do think, again, that tool that we used with the calculator was an exceptional education tool. And when we, when we got on the phone, Kristen and I recently met with the organizers of that website, and we had 1,000 people who spent an average of 12 minutes on the site. Now, maybe we were a little more detailed than we should have been in the numbers and the details that we put up there, but to get somebody to capture the attention of 1,000 people for an average of 12 minutes is pretty incredible. So we felt pretty good about that, and I, and again, I say it's a, it's a great tool, but maybe it's not the tool that we need for every single year.
My comment was the same as Cory's, so thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Enrique, do you have any?
Sure, yeah. Well, I want to thank Roslin, Kristen, for just your team and your strong work on our budget, which you've been doing for a long time, so thank you for professionalism there. I have some questions just around, as we have this tool, as we get the feedback from folks, I mean, people may put a lot of weight into, you know, teacher, you know, staff pay, academic performance, all the things that we, we do, I think, well, but we should continue to push and be good at. You know, we had that excess of, what, 6.6% from our, in our budget, it was a one-time thing. How are we doing with trying to help the schools that don't have as much, say, donations for ASB, for camps, for sports? Is there a way that we can try to funnel more money to those schools that have less money being donated to them by their communities?
I mean, I can tell you, we've done a few of those things already. We did send some ASB funds out to individual schools to help them with some uniforms and activities that they couldn't even fund because of last year's lack of interaction. Certainly, we have Esser dollars that are meant to help us with that type of recovery service, and, I mean, we haven't even hit recovery yet, really, right? We're, we're still just trying to make ends meet, but at the same time, trying to build a recovery plan that's systemic for the future. So those resources are available, we intend to utilize them for that purpose. I think some things too are just taking a little time to get off the ground, though. And then, I don't know if?
You mentioned some like ASBs. ASBs are no longer a cost barrier, they cannot be a cost barrier by law and by policy, and so, you know, it's really about, also that, as Roslin mentioned, that backfill, so that, you know, ASBs help kids, but if they don't have a bucket to plan, it's really hard in that, so they haven't had these fundraising activities. And so that was a major thing that Roslin did with James Neal to make sure that those pieces, and I think Roslin's point of, we haven't hit recovery yet. And so we know that there's resources that are going to be needed next school year. Hopefully, we'll be in recovery. I'm going to leave that comment there. And so, our commitment, and then I think it's really important that those values are applied and institutionalized, so how do we remove barriers? So we've used resources to make sure scholarships were available to be on the bell, so it's, so elementary students would have access, and those barriers wouldn't be there. And so that's a guiding principle that we will continue to maintain going into next year and beyond.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Director, okay. All right, well, thank you so much for that presentation, and it was, it's, it's amazing how coordinated and organized, and it all looks so beautiful on here, and then it, we'll hear, we'll hear next week, you know?
It certainly doesn't represent the time we put into it, does it?
The time you put into it, because I know it's, it's very long. And next week, as you said, we will hear the quarterly update, and that'll give us a better basis on where we are to help understand where we're going next year, so thank you for that. All right, superintendent, is there anything else on your agenda for this evening? Anything else you'd want?
I just want to thank you. I know that you have not had an easy road the last few weeks, there's a lot of information out there, you all get sometimes the brunt end of that, and at the same times, it's sometimes very difficult when you don't have the answers, or it's, the information is not, I guess, available to you. And so I appreciate your grace, understanding that our community continues to hurt during this difficult time. I want to thank our staff, they are doing amazing work out there. I think you saw a snapshot and snippets, not only on the operations side tonight, but the instructional side, and that work is happening in all different divisions, and so it's, it's extremely important that we take a moment to thank our educators. I want everyone to have a safe, healthy, long weekend. We have Monday, there will be no school for students or staff, and so I know that can be sometimes frustrating for a community, especially now when there's this big announcement, what does that mean, and I don't have an answer, but we're really encouraging folks to unplug on that, that day and be with their families and their community. And so we'll bring you some more updates next week, and have a great evening.
All right, well, thank you, and unless anyone else has any other comments, this meeting, the study session of Common Public Schools is adjourned.
I'm sorry about the door, I?
I took so many notes to stay awake.
No problem.
Look, look at these pages. I just kept writing. That was awesome. Then I saw you take off.
I'm looking at you.
Have fun.